I I I'm a fan of Roomwriter, what can I say?
Yeah. There's all zoning books behind you?
Um, mostly public policy and general interest. One I'm reading now.
Recording in progress.
Okay, and with that, um, I call this planning commission meeting to order on Tuesday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two at six P M, at six oh three P M. And I'll read the COVID protocol notice. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, section fifty four nine fifty three, as amended by A B three sixty one, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID nineteen on March fourth, twenty twenty. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the town can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code fifty four nine fifty three in order to protect the public health and the safety of attendees. Roll call, I'll take a roll call. Vice Chair Luster is not here. Commissioner Bodie, here. Commissioner Davis? Uh-oh. I I see your hand raised, Commissioner Davis. Is your audio not functioning? Can you hear us? You can't hear me. Okay, so that was a question for Town Attorney. Um, so Commissioner Davis being necessary for a quorum, can it constitute a quorum if he cannot hear up, or he can, we cannot hear him?
So, so this is a study session, so the intent is to receive input from the commissioners. I'm wondering whether there might be an alternative. For example, if he calls in and is on camera, but he's on it already.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, he can, he can, uh, through the chair. Commissioner Davis, if you want to, uh, leave the meeting and try to rejoin, or you can call in, that would be, that would work as well.
So let's continue on with the roll call while Commissioner Davis resolves tech issues. And, uh, I think we just, oh, where did we lose?
We lost Commissioner Davis. So, so we, so we did lose our quorum, so I'd recommend we wait till we get the quorum back and then we can continue.
All right, pause. And to the, uh, the three members of the public I see here on the meeting, um, we are resolving technical difficulties and will recommence as soon as we have a quorum.
So it gave me the opportunity to also, um, let Commissioner Thiel know that we're meeting at six and not six thirty, so he should be joining shortly.
Thank you, sounds good.
There he is.
So we do have a quorum, so Commissioner Thiel, Commissioner Davis is having some tech issues, but has restarted his computer. Um, so, and that's also Commissioner Thiel for audio. Um, so, uh, I will restart the roll call. Vice Chair Luster is, uh, is on vacation. Uh, Commissioner Bodie, here. Commissioner Davis was here, but is having tech issues and is attempting to come back on. Commissioner Helber is going to attempt to join this meeting, uh, later, uh, in the evening. Commissioner Polsky?
Present.
Commissioner Thiel?
Present.
And I Chair Hill, Hillis, and here. We are also joined by, uh, Planning Director Hamid, Assistant Town Attorney, Karen Murphy. Um, I believe I heard Planner Mendez, uh, running the tech in the room. Uh, and I, you know, playing romper room again. It looks like we also have the Town Manager in our attendance, so, uh, exciting evening. Um, conflict of interest, uh, should I wait for Commissioner Davis to join, or can I proceed?
You can proceed, and once he joins, you can check back in with him if he has anything to add.
Sounds good. Uh, conflict of interest, do any of, uh, the commissioners have a conflict of interest to report tonight? No, seeing none, we will move on and check back with Commissioner Davis when he joins us. Uh, contact with the applicants, we do actually have one applicant on, uh, in a consent item. Uh, does anyone, has anyone had any contact with the applicant this evening?
Through the chair, we do not have a consent item tonight.
I'm looking at our whole agenda.
Right, the wireless report actually needed to be renoticed, so it will come back to the Commission on the fifth of July with the proper notice, uh, and then we can put it on consent at that time. So tonight, we just only have, um, the Housing Element Report, and, um, uh, and we are, um, just focused on, uh, the two areas, the constraints, as well as the goals, policies, and it's a study session, so.
We still do have a, uh, consent calendar, though, right, with the, um, the minutes, or is?
Yes, yes.
Got it, so, uh, Commissioner Davis, I was just being corrected. I, I missed that the, um, that the, the wireless application is no longer on our consent agenda. That will be renoticed and will be back for consideration another time. Uh, but we still have on consent our minutes, but before we move on, um, we went through conflict of interest. Uh, do you have a conflict of interest to report tonight, or can we proceed? I presume that you can hear me and we can hear you. Yes. So, Davis, I saw a report from him, see, I think he messaged.
Okay, let me see if we can.
It, uh, it says his phone only lets him.
Sure, sure. Let me, let me s- see if I can assist with that. Um, and see if we can move him. See if we can move him, uh, over.
And in the interim, I see that, uh, our consultant, Barry Miller, has also, uh, joined us. Um, while we are resolving the tech issues, Commissioner Bodie?
Yes.
Can you do the honors of the, the pledge of allegiance and can you just wave off my daughter's number right now?
Yeah, it'd be my honor, I've been practicing all week. Okay, do we have an American flag? Um, Sean, we do, thank you, Director. Okay, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty.
Liberty.
Justice for all.
Yeah, I find it that's surprisingly difficult to do the, the pledge with, uh, with everyone on the line. Uh, but, but we make our, we make it through. Um, has, uh, Commissioner Davis been able to, it doesn't look like, oh, is that the, the nine two five number I see here? Commissioner Davis, you're here?
Yes, now, now I've got a double feedback.
All right.
I'm going to call visual, visual.
Sounds good, we'll keep you on mute until we need, until, uh, we need to hear from you.
Okay. Uh, problems resolved.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, yeah.
And, um, this time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the, the planning commission. Audience members should be aware that the commission may not discuss details or vote on, uh, non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referenced to staff or placed on a future agenda. Public input will also be taken from each item. If there are any members of the public, um, that wish to provide public comment at this time, please utilize the raise hand, uh, feature of this webinar, and we will call on you. Reminder, please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. Looking over at our numbers of the public, I don't see any hands raised. We can proceed. Now moving on to adoption of the consent agenda. We have, uh, two items on tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'd like to make one.
I think I saw Grant Thiel raise his hand first. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll start him now.
Commissioner Bodie, thank you. Um, roll call vote, Vice Chair Luster not here. Uh, Commissioner Bodie?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Think we may have lost him again. Uh, Commissioner Helber is not here, Commissioner Polsky?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Thiel?
Hi.
And I Chair Hillis, I'm also an I. Uh, the motion passes. Is, uh, uh, Assistant Town Attorney Murphy, are we able to add Commissioner Davis back onto that vote?
As the votes, the votes passed with a majority, I, I think that's fine, as the minutes have been approved.
Sounds good.
So we shouldn't need to go. Thank you.
Of course, moving on to the public hearing. Uh, input and feedback on H C D working draft Housing Element, constraints and programs addressing constraints. Before we get started, I just wanted to, uh, to say, uh, you know, we do expect this conversation to, to have some length. Um, we'll, uh, see how things go. Uh, but I'm thinking we may be taking a five, ten minute recess around seven, uh, seven thirty. Um, so, uh, if anyone has my text and they need it a little bit su- on the sooner side, let me know. Um, also, my understanding of this conversation is we're essentially setting the framework of our discussion for the, the Housing Element, which will be discussed uh, at another planning commission meeting in July. Um, so with that, this discussion is really has the intention of being high level, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, uh, Director Hamid. Um, but I know that staff has a presentation for us this evening. Uh, Director Hamid, did you have anything you'd like to say before that presentation?
Yes, so thank you, uh, Chair Hillis, and thank you, Planning Commission, for your patience. Uh, I really appreciate you guys, uh, making the time to come back tonight. Um, so tonight's meeting is the Comprehensive Advanced Planning Initiative, and the initiative includes several components, and tonight's component is the state mandated six-cycle twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one Housing Element update. Uh, and staff is, uh, working fast and furious, uh, on the working draft, uh, for next week. Um, ultimately, the policies that are before you for tonight uh, really reflect a balance of state laws and mandates, technical data, and locally established priorities. We have been meeting for the last nine months to discuss many of the priorities and the policies. So tonight is a framework for those policies and priorities, and we will come back at, at a later time to discuss more of the details. So tonight is an informational report, uh, focusing on Housing Element goals, policies and programs. And it's all, there's also an excerpt of the government constraints analysis. Uh, the full draft Housing Element is scheduled for July fifth, Planning Commission. Um, and then we will take feedback, uh, from the Planning Commission tonight, and we will incorporate that, um, into the draft. Uh, the policies, goals and programs, uh, are a result of robust community engagement, multiple joint meetings by the Town Council, the Planning Commission, stakeholder interviews with developers, collective guidance from the Planning Commission and the Town Council, data from the Balancing Act and from, uh, surveys, and then the annual report that is submitted to H C D, uh, every April first. So I would like to introduce the team tonight. Uh, we have Barry Miller with Barry Miller Consultants, Stephanie Hagar with B A E. Uh, we have, um, uh, Karen Murphy, who is the Town Attorney, uh, working with us on land use, and myself. And of course, we do also have, uh, staff, which is, uh, Suzie Mealy and Neo Mendez, who are also, uh, helping us, um, with, with a lot of things, uh, on this project. So, um, with that, I will, uh, have Barry, please start the PowerPoint presentation.
Great, um, Afshah, did you, were you gonna do the first couple of slides?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Um, so, just to recap, the Comprehensive Advanced Planning Initiative, uh, we are focusing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one Housing Element. Uh, it's the rezoning of key sites to accommodate the RENA, objective design standards for rezoned sites. We're also, um, at the same time, working on the Bolinger Valley Special Study, um, area rezoning. Mandatory general plan updates so that we have consistency between what we are doing in the Housing Element and the general plan. And there are also state mandated, um, uh, areas that we have to, uh, take care of, such as safety and transportation amendments. And we also have to do a program, programmatic level E I R. So tonight's focus, uh, we thought we would like try to break this into bite-sized pieces. Um, tonight's focus is really policies and programs, especially new programs added in response to the housing constraints. Um, so we have all the chapters and the appendices. They are posted to makemaragahome.org, and this is really so that the public uh, can start reviewing each of the chapters. Uh, Chapter Six, uh, will be replaced, as we said, uh, because we are really wanting your feedback tonight, and we will update that and then post it on June thirtieth. And then we will come back on July fifth, and we will review the full working draft Housing Element. We'll take public comment, and then Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the Town Council to forward the H C, the draft to H C D. So there are several milestones, actually many milestones, in the planning process. Uh, as I said, we've been working on this for the last nine months, uh, with input and guidance from Council and the Planning Commission. So we started in October twenty twenty-one, and we had some initial discussions with Commission and Council. Then we had, uh, our round one community workshops. In November twenty twenty-one, we've had discussion of implementation tools. November through February, um, the consultants did the data collection and the analysis. In March twenty twenty-two, we came back and did the rezoning options to meet the RENA. March twenty twenty-two, we had the second round of community workshops, and we also conducted the surveys. In April, we had the final direction on rezoning in the sites. And in May, uh, May fourth, we had the continued discussion of implementation tools. I want to say that throughout that, that timeline, we have been doing a robust community engagement in various forms, through newspapers, through in-person meetings, through walking tours, uh, through the Balancing Act, through surveys, reaching out to Saint Mary's specifically, uh, reaching out to, uh, community stakeholders, reaching out to developers. So there's been a robust, uh, community engagement throughout the process. Next. So the Housing Element is, um, I believe this is Barry where you take over, or Stephanie takes over.
Yes, we're gonna have Stephanie do the next couple of slides, thanks, Afshah.
Thank you, hi, I'm Stephanie Hager, B A E Urban Economics. Um, I'm gonna provide a brief overview on what the Housing Element is. I know for some of you, this is just a little bit of a refresher, but also for the sake of anybody attending who may not be as familiar. Um, the Housing Element is a required component of the general plan, and it has been since nineteen sixty-nine. Um, it is, uh, under state law, required to be updated every eight years, and it's the only component of the general plan that is subject to certification by the state. So that means that the state needs to review the Housing Element, uh, in particular, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or H C D, um, and verify that it meets the state requirements. Um, so it has a certain set of, uh, of contents that need to be in line with what the state is looking for from that review and need to be in compliance with state law. One of the big components of that is addressing the fair share housing need. So all municipalities and counties within the state need to demonstrate that they have the ability to accommodate their fair share of housing growth, um, in the state over the next eight years. One really key thing to keep in mind with that is that the requirement is not that local governments build housing, um, but instead that they create rules that enable that housing to be built and to facilitate the production of enough housing to meet that fair share threshold. Um, so a little bit more on what, what we mean when we talk about the fair share housing requirement. Um, technically, the, the technical term for that is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, uh, which we shortened to RENA. This starts at the state, um, which determines the total statewide need for housing over the next eight years. The state then distributes that total need down to councils of government in each region. And each region is then responsible for coming up with a process to allocate that total need for the region among all the counties and municipalities within, within the region. Uh, there is a process by which local governments are able to, um, be, be part of that allocation. Um, but at the end of the day, the, each local government receives an allocation from that process, uh, which is called their, you know, allocation, or their regional housing needs allocation. Um, in Maraga, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation for the upcoming cycle, which is twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one, is one thousand one hundred and eighteen units. This is a substantial increase from last cycle, it's, uh, almost a four hundred percent increase. This is due largely to changes in how the state is doing the, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. That has increased substantially statewide for this upcoming cycle, and that's been filtered down to, um, just about every, uh, county and municipality throughout the state. Um, of this total, there are requirements that it be divided, that it serve households at different income levels. Um, so for Maraga, the total that is meant to serve households for, that are at the low income or very low income level is five hundred and one units, with the remainder serving moderate or above moderate income households. Um, and just, yeah. Um, so, just gonna give you a quick overview of what we, um, the outline for your Housing Element update, which is largely driven by the requirements under state law for what needs to be included. Um, although within each of these components, there's definitely room for, um, local input, and they're, and that's intended to be part of the process. So we have your introduction chapter, which provides an overview of what the Housing Element is, and a, a little bit of background on Maraga. Um, the second chapter is the Evaluation of Progress. So this is where we look at how Maraga did in terms of meeting its housing goals in the last Housing Element update period. It's also where we look at all of your programs from your last Housing Element and decide whether or not those are appropriate to carry forward into the next Housing Element that we're working on now, um, whether some of those should be modified, or whether some of those should be deleted. There's a needs assessment component that looks at housing market and socioeconomic data to identify housing needs. Um, a sites analysis that, um, looks at the sites that can accommodate your RENA allocation over the next eight years and, uh, identifies how those sites are appropriate for housing development. There's a constraints analysis that looks at both governmental and non-governmental constraints. By governmental, we're talking about, uh, development standards, fees, uh, zoning that, um, the town puts, can put in place that could either facilitate or constrain housing production. Non-governmental constraints are usually, um, things like high cost to build, high construction costs. It can be public opposition to developing housing as well. Um, and then I'm gonna skip over to the appendices real quick before I talk about the goals, policies and programs. So we have an affirmatively furthering for housing appendix in this Housing Element update. This is a, um, big focus for this Housing Element, uh, statewide. There are new requirements related to affirmatively furthering for housing. So what this section does is it looks at various very housing issues, uh, in Maraga and really regionally as well. So this includes things like discrimination in the housing market, also segregation, uh, patterns in housing, um, uh, displacement risk and disparate impacts between groups in terms of, uh, housing needs. So if you're seeing, you know, some groups that are experiencing higher rates of, um, high housing cost burdens, um, that's something that this would look, that this looks at as well. There's also a Sites Inventory Appendix, which looks at the sites where Maraga can accommodate housing over the next eight years, and then an appendix that looks at, uh, that provides results from some of the public input process, um, components that have been part of this, uh, Housing Element update. So all of this feeds into the Goals, Policies and Programs. We're looking at the analysis that we've done in these prior chapters, um, the input that we've gotten from the public. We're also considering the input that we get from you and also from the Town Council, um, and thinking about new requirements under state law. And that's all feeding into this Chapter Six, which we're gonna be really focusing on tonight, which is the Goals, Policies and Programs. Um, so, when we talk about the Goals, Policies and Programs, just to sort of provide an overview of what, what we're meaning by these different terms. Um, so the goals are really sort of broad aspirational statements that lay out, um, an ideal future condition. So thinking about what, you know, at a, at a broad level, housing in Maraga should look like in eight years. Um, the policies are, are, um, intended to guide your decisions as you work towards achieving those goals. Um, so these are things for you to look at and say, as we're trying to get to these goals that are in our Housing Element, and we'll be talking more about what those goals are in a minute, um, what are some ways that we are trying to, to formulate our decisions to get to that goal? The programs are really specific action steps. So these all lay out individual actions that the town will take to implement the policies that are shown in your Housing Element. Um, these include, uh, not only actions that you'll take, but also, um, information about which department in the town is responsible for implementation, potential funding sources, and objectives for each of these programs, which in some cases are quantified, um, in order to provide a metric that you can use to look back at later and see whether or not you've been successful in achieving the goal, uh, or the objective, uh, associated with each program. So Maraga's goals for, uh, that we, the draft goals that we've included in the, uh, packet for tonight for the Housing Element update are first, to create opportunities for housing to accommodate anticipated growth. This is, um, focused, uh, heavily on trying to get to that RENA number, so we're thinking about changes in zoning in the general plan, um, that are necessary to get to that RENA over the next eight years. Um, Goal Two relates to providing a variety of housing types and affordability levels. So this would be trying to expand the range of housing that's available in Maraga in terms of building typologies and also affordability targets, um, to make, make housing more widely available at a range of income levels. Goal Three is about conserving existing housing and neighborhood safety and also access to services. So this relates to fire safety, um, housing rehabilitation, and then also providing housing in a, in a manner that allows, um, particularly residents of affordable housing to have access to high-quality services like schools and, um, transportation. Um, Goal Four is related to governmental constraints, and particularly ensuring that, uh, the, that the town is not, um, enacting regulations that could, that unduly constrain housing, and particularly the housing, uh, the development of housing to meet all income levels that are called for in the RENA. Um, Goal Five is related to special needs housing and ensuring that there's housing to, um, accommodate a, a range of special needs within Maraga. So that includes, um, large families, people with disabilities, seniors, um, formerly, um, unhoused populations or currently unhoused populations. Um, so a range of different types of households or individuals that may have special housing needs, thinking about ways that you can, um, have housing to support the needs of, across that whole, um, spectrum of need. Goal Six is about promoting fair housing, um, and equal housing opportunities, um, which again is, is something that, um, we're really putting a lot of thought into in this, as a part of this Housing Element update, and something that, uh, we know that the state is very interested in, in ensuring that all municipalities are, are keeping track of this and, and really pushing this through their Housing Element update. And Goal Seven relates to promoting energy efficiency and conservation in housing. And with that, I think I'm turning it over to Barry.
Thanks, Stephanie, and thank you, Afshah, and good evening, Commissioners. Um, Barry Miller with the, uh, consulting team. And, uh, I was looking at the Housing Element before we started this meeting, and, uh, you know, it's a big document, it's about two hundred pages plus appendices. And trying to digest it in a presentation like this is really challenging. So what, what we thought we would do in the next few slides is really focus. So what we thought we would do in the next few slides is really focus on what is new and different about this housing element? What programs are being introduced that don't currently exist? You know, what are some of the new concepts that are coming out of this element? There's a lot of policy and program language that's being carried forward from the current housing element, but we've added some really pretty important programs. So the next few slides are going to focus on what's new and what's been added. And in the agenda packet for this evening, I think we highlighted those new programs with a star. And I should say too, that in the other chapters of the housing element, there's also a lot of new content, but it is mostly just background information and existing conditions, discussions about housing needs and housing constraints, really meant to inform the new policies and programs. So under goal one, which Stephanie mentioned, was intended to create opportunities for anticipated housing growth, really opportunities to meet the RINA assignment. We have several programs. One is to complete the update of the general plan. This includes not only the consistency amendments on the elements that are required to be amended under state law, but really the entire Maraga general plan, which now is 20 years old. And the general rule in California is that you update your general plan comprehensively about every 15 to 20 years. So we're due for major revision of our general plan. And we're actually doing a lot of that work through this process that we're going through now, most of the land use decisions. But there are other elements of the plan that relate to things like community design and public facilities and open space that will be updated as part of the, as part of phase two. There are also zoning changes, and these will be somewhat familiar to the commission because you've participated in meetings with the town council where we've talked through all of these things. We had a meeting with the commission and council in March where we went through some of what you see on the screen here. That includes increasing the allowable density in the R20 and mixed-use zones, which are in the Maraga Center specific plan, from 20 units per acre to 24 units per acre. This is something we actually have to do under state law. We can't have a maximum density of 20 units per acre when that is actually the minimum density that the state requires for any site that we're going to consider eligible as a lower-income site. We also have to create mixed-use zoning in parts of the REEM Center. And that's because we need to create opportunities for housing, for multifamily housing in parts of Maraga other than the MCSP area. So REEM has always been, at least for the last 20 years, seen as an opportunity area for multifamily housing. So we're moving forward with that by rezoning some of the properties in the REEM Shopping Center vicinity to enable housing. It's currently not a permitted use under the existing zoning, and it will become a permitted use in the future. The other relates to allowing density to be transferred from residential and open space properties to commercial sites. That's currently not really allowed under current, it's not clearly allowed, at least under current municipal code provisions. We're also looking at a few map amendments, which I'll go over in just a minute. There are also some zoning changes that we've identified as needed to be implemented after the housing elements adopted. That include taking another look at our six dwelling unit per acre zone, which is the zone that applies to the multifamily areas along Ascot and Donald and some of the areas where we have existing multifamily housing, to come up with a zoning designation that's a little more responsive to what's actually built, built in those areas, which is more dense than six units per acre. Likewise, considering changes to some of the R12 and R20 standards that may not exactly get us the type of development that's envisioned in those zoning districts and moving the floor area ratio or FAR standards out of the design guidelines where they're more advisory and into the municipal code where they can function as actual standards that are enforceable. The other major program is to monitor development activity in the MCSP and REEM and look at further zoning changes in the future. And by that, we mean we're retaining density as the way you measure zoning, the number, the allowable number of units in an area. But we had, you may recall, we had some conversations at meetings with the commission and council about possibly using floor area ratio instead of density or changing the way we regulate density or increasing the density and so forth. We're not proposing that at this point in time, but we want to monitor what happens in the next eight years and do kind of a mid-year check-in, or I should say a mid-cycle check-in in a few years and see if we're getting the kind of activity that's envisioned by the plan. There are a couple of slides I'm gonna go through before we get into the programs for goal two, just to highlight what we're talking about in terms of the zoning map changes. And just for orientation, we're looking at the Maraga Center specific plan area here. So here, hopefully you can see my cursor, Maraga Way, Maraga Road is here. Safeway is pretty much at the geographic center of this map. That seems to be the point that everyone orients to when we put a map of MCSP up. But the zoning changes are that there is an area west of Laguna Creek that's going to be zoned 24 units per acre instead of 20 units per acre. The retail residential, this is the north end of School Street where the batting cages are and where the RV storage is. That's going to also be zoned to allow 24 units per acre instead of 20 units per acre. We are rezoning the Maraga Nursery, the closed nursery site that is at the north end of the shopping center. It's currently zoned MCSP commercial, and it will be zoned retail residential, which will allow housing to be built on that site. We're also, I'm moving now down to Maraga Way and School Street. There's a vacant lot at the corner at Viator, and then there's a Montessori school and a couple of office buildings adjacent. Those will be zoned MCSP office residential, which would allow these, the vacant lot at least, to be developed with housing in the future. And then the office residential mixed-use area that includes the southern part of School Street down to the Willow Spring Church and the Serbian Church, which is down here, Saklin School and so forth. That's also being rezoned to allow 24 units per acre instead of 20. And the vacant lot, the vacant site that most folks know as Area 14 is also being rezoned to allow 24. So in essence, really, the big change here is that folks who own property in this area will be able to build slightly more housing in the future than they can under today's regulations. And that really aligns the housing element with state law for those areas. Moving up to the REEM Center, these are the zoning changes that are going to be taking place there. And I should also clarify, the timing of these zoning changes will be concurrent with the adoption of the housing element. So in January, when the council adopts the housing element, it will also be adopting these zoning changes. So what we're doing here is we're taking the office buildings on the south side of REEM Boulevard. This is west of the REEM Theater, not including the theater, which retains its current zoning. But, and then the couple of parcels across REEM Boulevard, including where town offices are, and rezoning that to allow housing, which is currently not permitted in those properties. And we do have a good vacant lot here right next to the theater that will be allowed to develop with residential uses up to 24 units per acre, and it can continue to have office uses. So this is a flexible mixed-use zone that allows both housing and office development. Another change is that the northern part of the REEM Shopping Center, the St. Mary's property, where the supermarket used to be on the north side of REEM Boulevard, all of this property is currently zoned community commercial, which does not allow housing. The new zoning will allow housing up to 24 units per acre. It will also allow continuation of all of the existing commercial activities that are happening in that zoning district. There's also a vacant property at the corner of Lucas that's right next to the 7-Eleven. That is zoned limited commercial. That will be rezoned to mixed commercial residential so that housing can be built on that corner lot. There's not an active proposal at this point in time for the vacant lot, but this new zoning will make it easier if the owner of that property chooses to build housing in the future to develop there also at 24 units per acre. This area, by the way, at Ascot and Maraga Road is already developed with residential and actually has a zoning district of suburban office. So that's going to be rezoned to the mixed-use designation as well. So one question you may ask is we're talking about a density that, you know, many folks are unfamiliar with. It's not that unfamiliar. If you look around the surrounding communities, this is what density of 20 to 24 units per acre looks like. We're generally talking two- to three-story residential development or three-to-four-story if it's mixed use with housing, or sorry, with retail on the ground floor. In Lafayette, here's an example that some of you may be familiar with. It's 23 units per acre. You can see the examples from Palo Alto. This is Danville over here on the right. But the interesting thing is that even in Maraga, we have these densities already. So we think, well, there's no zoning district that allows 24 units per acre. But in fact, we have densities that go up to 33 units per acre already in the town. These are vestiges of when Maraga was an unincorporated Contra Costa County and had much more lenient zoning for some of these areas like Ascot, Donald than it does today. So if you look at the building, for example, next door to the town offices on REEM Boulevard, that's 33 units per acre. So this is not a novel concept. It's just a concept that's been sort of dormant in the town for the last 40 years that we need to bring back to meet these state requirements and also the affirmatively furthering fair housing mandate. So moving on to goal two, this goal is to provide a variety of housing. So really, the first goal's more focused on sites. This is really more focused on making sure we can build different kinds of housing in the town. But supporting the state density bonus law is something we really are already doing, but this puts it in writing. Reaching out more to affordable housing developers. We have already started doing this through this process and will continue to reach out to some of the local nonprofits and maybe link them to some of the opportunities that we have in the town. Allowing some other types of housing in the town such as cohousing, which is where there may be multiple households in a single dwelling unit with shared kitchen and living and dining facilities. Live-work units, for example, which is becoming more popular, especially now that more people are teleworking or working from home, and improving access to some of the subsidies that may be available to develop affordable housing. These subsidies are really, really limited, but we're starting from zero. So anything we can do to improve access to these subsidies is really an improvement. Goal three is really more about conserving what we have. And this means taking care to retain the apartments and multifamily and more affordable units that are in the town and making sure that we stay a safe community that's prepared for wildfire, that has the capacity for evacuation, and that is dealing with things like traffic and infrastructure. So some of the programs under this goal are to adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance. This would ensure that when new housing is developed, a certain percentage is below market rate. We're tentatively setting that at 10% for now. And then also facilitating the production of accessory dwelling units. Again, something we're already doing in Maraga, but it's not really enshrined as a housing element program, and it will be in the future. SB 9 is a piece of legislation that was passed last year by the state. Very controversial legislation that allows residents to divide their properties in order to add a second, not just a second dwelling unit, but a second home on the property or potentially divide their current home into two units. We, again, there's not really a choice in this. It's state law. And in this case, it's really being better prepared to, to deal with the state law and providing public information on what SB 9 is and how it impacts the town. Shared housing is a concept that many other communities have embraced. This is especially helpful for older adults that may be living alone, particularly if they're on fixed incomes. It's an opportunity to rent a room in your house or to share your home with another maybe like situated household. And it's, it's something that's coordinated by several nonprofits in the region. We're calling for a public realm plan for the REEM Center. And previously, there was a call for a specific plan for the REEM Center that would have come up with new zoning. But since we're actually developing new zoning through this process, through the housing element, really what's left is to look at how we can maybe reorganize the REEM Center to make it more attractive, to create more civic gathering places, to look at how we can beautify the center and organize it so that it's more, a more attractive place to develop. And this is really working with the property owners, the fire district, and other departments of the city, of the town rather, and the other special districts to come up with a plan that makes the REEM Center more attractive and conducive to development. Allowing childcare by right on the ground floor, that's really an opportunity to make it easier for folks, to more convenient for folks, for families in particular, to, to live in Maraga. Providing assistance to first-time buyers. It's really difficult to become a first-time buyer in the town right now. And if there are ways the town can help, we want to encourage that. And as I mentioned, wildfire safety and evacuation planning. And I'll add that this was the number one issue that came out of the resident survey. Everyone's worried about wildfire safety and the ability to safely evacuate in an emergency. And it's challenge, it's very challenging to have a state mandate to plan for, you know, 1,118 units at the same time where cognizant of these hazards and the need to be able to evacuate. So goal four is making sure that we address the constraints. This kind of links back to the information we provided along with the goals, policies, and programs in the staff report. Some of the programs are to simplify the plan development process so that there are fewer steps to that process. And this is something that's already underway. We talked at a previous meeting with the council and commission about reducing the parking regulations, particularly for studio and one-bedroom apartments and guest spaces, so that they're more in line with what we see in nearby communities like Lafayette and Danville. We could consider further reductions to the parking standards in the future, but we're not proposing any at this time, other than the adjustments for studio and one bedrooms and guest spaces. Also, meeting with developers and builders to find out some of the obstacles that they're facing in trying to develop in Maraga. And we've heard this from the commission as well. You want to hear from developers and builders. So we're including a program to do more outreach, more engagement, and more communication with our local development communities so that we understand the constraints, can respond to them. Infrastructure grants are really important. We have large areas, particularly in the MCSP area, that would need road extensions and utility extensions to facilitate development. We're looking at possible grant sources to facilitate that. The scenic corridor regulations, I'll, I have a slide after this one about that, so I'll get to that. And then technical assistance to the MC, to implement MCSP. There's been some progress made in implementation. We have seen about 60 units, 6-0, units of housing built since that was adopted, but there are many more opportunities, and there may be some actions that can help facilitate that. The issue with the scenic corridors is when the town adopted the MCSP, it also adopted a requirement that any development fronting Maraga Way or Canyon Road slash Maraga Road has a 40-foot front setback, and also some requirements that the upper floors, anything above the first floor, be stepped back from the ground floor so that there's essentially a kind of a pyramid effect where you're creating the impression as you're on the road that you've got a one-story building, even though there are maybe additional stories in the back. There are also a greater setback requirement, setback requirements for upper floors in the R20 zone. So if you've got a small site on Maraga Way or Maraga Road in the MCSP area, and you have a 40-foot area in the front of that where you can't build anything, that is a constraint, and we're looking at possible ways that can be mitigated, either through a reduction to that setback or possible exceptions for certain types of development. We're also looking at whether or not the scenic corridor requirements are consistent with state laws for encouraging housing. Goal five, which is about residents with special needs, we're looking at compliance, again, with state laws that require the town to allow certain types of housing. For all intents and purposes, these housing types are already allowed, but it's not explicitly stated in the municipal code that, for example, manufactured housing is allowed in all zoning districts on a foundation or that small residential care facilities, these are basically group homes with fewer than six residents, are permitted. These are state laws, and this is just amending the municipal code to make sure that these laws are in, are in place. We also are aware there's a very large and growing adult, older adult population, many of whom wish to stay in their homes and age in place. So looking at ways we can help folks with retrofitting their homes and making them easier to live in as mobility may decrease. Goal six is equal opportunities for all residents. This is really the fair housing goal. And this is really a chance to explain how many of the other programs that are under the other goals achieve this, this, this goal of affirm- achieve this, this, this goal of affirmatively furthering fair housing. So there's some cross-referencing to other programs here. We also are looking at potentially entering into an agreement with a fair housing provider to provide counseling services, tenant landlord, tenant mediation and counseling for first time home buyers. Many other communities in Contra Costa County and Alameda County already have these arrangements. There are a number of nonprofits that offer this service and that would essentially just be there as a resource for Moraga residents in the event there was a fair housing issue. And they provide annual reports to show us how we're doing. There's also a program to provide fair housing training for staff and to provide information on fair housing to local tenants and landlords. Finally, goal seven, which is residential energy efficiency and conservation. Again, many of these things are, our actions were already doing and programs were already taking. This is just an opportunity to demonstrate that the town is committed to energy conservation and efficiency and will continue to implement the latest green building codes and energy efficiency codes and support the use of renewable energy systems, water efficient landscaping and the weatherization of older homes so that they maybe can have lower utility bills for, for residents. Also, in the text on this subject, there's a long menu of all of the different resources available for lower income residents to reduce home energy costs. So wrapping up, we have a number of milestones coming up. As Afshah mentioned, we have a hearing on July 5th with Planning Commission. It's just a week from now. The whole document, I will add, is already up. We posted it today, except for chapter six, which are the goals, policies and programs. We're holding that publication of that so that we can consider input from the commission this evening. We had hoped to get that a week ago, but that meeting was postponed for technical reasons. So we're here tonight to ask for your feedback and thoughts on the goals, policies and programs so that we can make some quick edits tomorrow and get this published by Thursday. What that does is that begins a 30-day review period. And again, I want to emphasize, this is not the public review draft for adoption. This is a working draft that's going to be submitted to the state for their review. I will tell you, having done this in other communities, they're going to send us about a 10 to 12-page letter in about three months that says, here are all the things that we want you to do before we're, we'll certify your element. And then at that point, we will need to make additional revisions in response to the state comments. And that will be the public review draft that we bring back to the commission and to the city, the town council in January for adoption. So we anticipate that we will be back before the commission in December with a draft, a draft housing element. We will likely be back to you before then because in that intervening six-month period, we're going to be working on the zoning changes, the objective design standards and some of the other items that require input from the planning commission. So you will be hearing from us throughout that period, but the actual action to adopt the housing element will not come until early next year. So that concludes the presentation for those in the public who may be watching. Just a reminder again, make moragahome.org is the URL. If you go to that URL, you'll find links to all of the documents that we've produced in this process, including the housing element itself, which is now out as a working draft. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. I just want to add that we have added one more meeting for town council and that will be on July 11th. So July 11th, council will hold a special meeting on the working draft housing element. And then July 13th will be a second meeting to consider the working draft housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted the minutes to also reflect that during the presentation, Commissioners Helber and Commissioner Davis were able to join. Commissioner Davis, I don't know if you've been able to resolve your audio issue, but it's good to see you. And with that, I wanted to check to see if any of the commissioners had any questions for staff on what was presented. And also just note that we do intend to do a, about a 10-minute recess at about 7:30. Not seeing any hands. Although I do see, oh, Commissioner, I think I saw Commissioner Davis's lips move, but I couldn't hear him. But I did see Commissioner Helber with his hand raised. Commissioner Helber.
I can go first if he wants, but I'll jump in. On the rezoning slide, and I hate to ask, but is there any way we could throw that slide back up?
Sure. So there were two rezoning slides. Is this for the?
We're focused on the Ream, the Ream Centers area.
Got it.
I noticed that we're upzoning a portion of the Ream Center, but not all of the Ream Center.
Yes.
Wanted to get a little bit more background on that.
Okay, for, in the interest of time, I'll just keep it here rather than going into presentation view. But yeah, so the, the southern part of the Ream Center, which essentially is Home Goods and then a few of the, the tenants that are south of the entrance driveway off Moraga Road are retaining the commercial zone. So are the two, there's a auto center here and then a gas station here and then the theater. We're retaining the commercial only zone there so that we, we really don't create more housing opportunities than we need at this point. We already have a pretty substantial buffer of additional capacity that's being created through rezoning. And so there's some sensitivity to creating too much housing and possibly losing some of the commercial activity that, that we have. We need the tax revenue and the services that those, those businesses provide. And so I think the, the idea here was that we would take it one step at a time. And if we find that we need that area in the future, we might consider expanding this zone. But initially, we're only showing the zone as you see it in this red, red line.
Would there be another way to do it where we could allow it to be upzoned? But in this area that you have excluded, we have a overlay of retaining commercial. I just feel like you're not going to get your best proposal if you're only allowing the site to be upsized from the, just from the building market. Anyway, that was a, just a question.
Real quick, Commissioner Helber, if I may, Commissioner Davis, I think we're getting a little bit of feedback from your line. Can you put yourself on mute? I can't, can't hear you, but I was definitely hearing some, some feedback. I think, and your screen flashed up. Sorry, Commissioner Helber.
That's quite all right. I have a feeling the answer is going to be the same. But on the south side of Moraga Road, I see we're upzoning that one vacant parcel and where the 7-Eleven is. But there are, let's call it underutilized, commercial parcels that go all the way up to the, the old Signature Development. And I was just wondering the thought process of not including those parcels.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, I mean, it's sort of, it is sort of the same answer. And this was a conversation that we had with town council. And we did look at the possibility of allowing housing in all of these zoning districts. But I think backed away from that just because of the potential loss of some of the businesses. The, you've got, I guess it's, there's a, the restaurant, the fire station is in here. There's veterinary clinic, a couple of other things. But you know, nothing that jumped out at us as, wow, that's an amazing housing opportunity site right there. So we didn't pursue zoning there versus the vacant lot that's on the corner at Lucas, which is pretty clearly an opportunity site. And Afshah, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, too.
Yeah, I, I do want to add something. The vacant site next to the 7-Eleven off Moraga Road and Lucas, we have a willing property owner who's been engaged with us and who has expressed interest in developing that particular property for housing. And also, in the same vein, we also have a willing property owner at the Ream Center. And we've contacted them early on and Jay Kerner, in fact. And he is very interested in developing that northern portion, portion of the Ream Center for housing and mixed-use development there. And then I think the third thing that's really important is that there's a new law, law called the no net loss provision. So once you zone your properties for housing and if you don't develop them or they're not developed to that certain zoning or for housing, then you have to find it somewhere else. So I think, you know, after taking in guidance from our city attorney, we thought that maybe the, a more strategic approach would be to leave a portion of that commercial area as commercial and maybe just save it for the next housing element or if we needed to make adjustments later on.
That's good information. I hadn't thought about the no net loss and if we were to rezone it. And then what would we do if it wasn't developed?
Correct. I think that was a huge factor in, in weighing our decision and reevaluating that particular site.
I have other thoughts, but that is my only questions of staff.
Those are good questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Helber. And I'm going to go last, but Mr. Miller, if you wouldn't mind keeping that slide handy because that were my questions also. Do any of the other commissioners have questions for staff? Not seeing any hands raised. I'll ask you, Barry, if you can please put the slide back up again. So I have the same question. And one of the things that I know, we're not talking about doing a specific plan for this area, but we are talking about a public realm plan. And I don't know if public realm plans are held specifically just for housing. But I do know that one of the things that we delved into when we went after the specific plan, take the example of the, the Moraga Ranch area. We did talk about just specific design guidelines and other development items for what the town might wish it to look like if it were redeveloped. And I do know that the, that Ream Center, they, they've come back a couple of times, I believe, with attempts at facelifts. And I don't know where those lie. I think that may have stalled. I'm wondering though, whether or not, if we're not planning on, it looks like it is the parcels identified as 590, 580, 5, 536 and 530 and portions that are unnumbered. I'm wondering whether or not we can still fit them into the public realm plan so that it can still have a, a consistent and well-thought-out coherent look for the area if, if it is redeveloped as, to retain as commercial. You know, I know that some communities, when they've had large areas like this, which do have multiple owners, which I believe is the case with Ream Center, there's been, they, there have been opportunities even for master developers to come in to actually coordinate things. So there is some consistency with the development. Just some ideas that I, that struck me, having formerly lived across the street from this underutilized area. Similarly, with the, the veterinary clinic. Do you know whether or not we reached out to the property owner for the veterinary clinic on whether or not they had an interest similar to the landowner for the vacant lot near parcel 625?
Chair Hillis, I can respond to the first part of the question about the public realm plan. So the intent of that is that it would cover the entire area and not just the areas being rezoned. So it would be a comprehensive study of all of the Ream commercial properties. It could even include some of the adjacent residential properties. I'm, and Afshah, I don't know if, if there was any communication with the veterinary clinic. I, I didn't have any myself.
Yeah, I did reach out to the veterinary clinic. Actually, I did send, early in the process, I sent letters to the properties at Ream and around Ream, MCSP and around MCSP. And in fact, one of the ones was the veterinary clinic. And you know, we discussed it, but I, I think he wasn't really sure of his future plans at this time. So he didn't really show too much of an interest for housing at that site or to change it. The one that we did hear from was the, the storage facility site. They were interested. And so was the gas station at the corner. But I think, you know, it would have been kind of spotty if we did just one or two and didn't look at it in terms of comprehensively rezoning the entire thing.
And just a follow-up question on that. So I, I do think that there was a, Barry, you had mentioned the possibility of a midterm or mid-course correction. If we're not getting the housing we wanted at that point, if we did see either the other parcels at Ream or the veterinary clinic or the, the storage facility as other opportunities, those would be things that we could come back in and reassess later. Is that?
Yes, absolutely. We can amend the housing element at any time. So that, this is not necessarily cast in stone for the next eight years.
Thank you very much. I have other comments, which I'll hold for later. And I did see Commissioner Teal with his hand raised.
And I'll end, screen share here.
Yeah, I, I, to just, as a follow-up to Commissioner Hillis's question, based upon what we're looking at here for this, say, across the two commercial districts, do we know what optimistically could be achieved from housing units that could be added if we rezoned as planned for the commercial, two commercial districts? How close does that get us to that 1,100 number?
So when you add in the rezoning of the Ream and the rezoning that's proposed at the MCSP, we're actually substantially over the 1,100 number. A lot of that capacity already exists. I think that the net gain from the rezoning at Ream is around 350 units of capacity. That's about the number that we were looking at.
Gotcha. Okay. Just kind of more of a curiosity where we were with the current zoning as far as being able to achieve it, where this could get us from a capacity standpoint.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Bodie or Commissioner Polsky?
No, right now, no. I'll, I've got some comments, but I'll wait until it's appropriate time.
Sounds good. This, this may be an appropriate time for us actually to take our recess as, and sorry for members of the public that have been on this, but it gives us all a moment for a break and then we will come back for public comment following a 10-minute break. So let's plan on being back here at 7:20. Okay, so please don't forget to turn off your, your microphone and your camera. Thank you. We are at time. Um, if uh commissioners are about. Uh, just flip your cameras back on and we can get things started with public comment. Um, just a message to staff. We did get a message from the public that the attachment B online. Only has the odd pages. If uh we can take a look at that.
Sure, we we will fix that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know, Miss Coates. And it looks like we have everyone, so with that. Uh, the we will uh at this time, we will open uh to public comment. Uh, for this portion of the hearing, um as they pertain specifically to this item. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item, please use. Utilize the raise hand feature of this webinar, and we will call on you. Reminder to state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes, and I believe I see. One raised hand from Dave Brizoni. If we can move him over to the meeting. Uh, Director Hamid, if you would wouldn't mind assisting me with keeping time, I'd appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Brizoni, please uh proceed.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, my quick ten and chair.
Can you, can you speak up a little bit, please? We we it's hard to hear you.
Can you, can you? No, no.
Are you, are you there? We may have lost Mr. Brizoni. Um. And we can come back to him if he is uh. I see you're back off mute again. Uh, Mr. Brizoni, are you with us? I hear something very, very faint, but I don't hear. I can't, we can't understand what you're saying, unfortunately. Um, maybe, Mr. Brizoni, we can come back to you um and see if there is somebody else that has com- uh any comment. You may wanna try unplugging and replugging back in your microphone, and that could help. Um, and do, does anyone else on the line have comment? Doesn't look like it. I think we may only have Mr. Brizoni, and I I know from our prior meeting that. My commissioners would definitely like to hear from you. Um, can we try to pull him back over onto this side? Here he is. Um, Mr. Brizoni, if you can take yourself off mute. Um, we won't begin the three minutes until we actually can confirm that we can hear you. Uh, if you're speaking, you're still on mute. Here you go. We can't hear you, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm gonna try my laptop.
Oh, wait, that just improved the last minute, but yes.
Did you hear that?
Yes, we did. Right, right at the end, when you said laptop, you you came into.
Wait, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, oh my god. Uh, I normally don't have this problem, so. Um, first of all, I want I submitted a letter dated uh dated June twenty-first. I wanna make sure you had a chance to read that. Uh, it also included a bunch of uh additional. Submittals that we passed along to the town at previous meetings. Uh, I want I wanna make sure. Uh, that some of my questions are asked and answered. So some of those questions pertain to. The implementation process for our specific plan, where they changed a lot of the rules. They were adopted. Uh, November tenth, uh, two thousand twenty, and the hillside inter-micheline regulations, and I believe all of those. Uh, all of those actions implemented a bunch of additional constraints to our properties. So that was part of my letter, and I want I wanna know the legality of that. That's at my understanding of that's being three thirty. You're not allowed to come back in and change the rules and start implementing more restrictive rules. That would lessen the number of units and the density and issues like that. So that's a big part. Uh, of my letter. Uh, you know, I also wanna add on, uh, I I think it's interesting that staff did mention that in the Reem Center. Uh, densities are over thirty-three dwelling use break, but I think maybe they're somewhere even higher than that. This has been part of the problem we had with the town of Maraga. Uh, and it's like, you know, the Maraga Center is the uh, you know, the fourth stepchild. Uh, and Reem has always been allowed to have, you know, more commercial development, uh higher density, uh re- uh residential development. Then when the town comes and says you get six dwelling use break, or oh, and by the way, you have to put those dwellings. On ten thousand square foot lots on our property. You know, that's part of the constraints issue that, you know, we, the Brazilians, have been dealing with for years and years. Now, uh, you know, I'm bringing up the implementation process and also the hillside regulations. Because this is something that just goes back a couple of years, and a lot of these corrections and constraints should have been removed. Back, uh, you know, during the implementation processes. So, um, you know, I want I wanna make sure that we're not enacting more constraints on our property. And one of those is, and I wanna I wanna be clear on our twenty area. Uh, and I'm specifically referring to revise eight point three four, check it. Eight point three four oh four oh, where uh the town, I believe, they added exclusive of streets. The the ordinance before, or the implementation, did not have exclusive of streets. So obviously, changing uh the uh. Changing the amount of land that the density applies to is a major impact. On the number of interstate you can or cannot have. And if you remove the area for streets, you are lessening the total capacity. So I wanna make sure you understand what I'm talking about, and I believe that change was made in the implementation process. Uh, and then, uh, uh, I guess I had some questions on increasing the. Uh, the density in the Maraga Center uh uh to Kenny Kenny's nursery. So. Uh, you know, I I think that's a positive for us. Uh, you know, that was an area that, you know, didn't allow residential before, uh, but you know, I. Would wanna look at that, uh, look at the.
Chair, we're at uh three minutes and forty-five seconds.
Okay, I would like to look at the the boundaries on on that area to make sure maybe uh if we have to adjust it. In in some manner so that it, you know, aligns better with our other uh higher density problem. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, any other uh members of the public have questions? Or comments? Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of this meeting and bring it back to. The commissioners for further discussion. Uh, do any commissioners have any uh additional questions or comments that they'd like to to make at this time? Is he Commissioner Bodie?
Yeah, um, so. Uh, if if this is the right time for comments, then I'm just gonna offer up um a few of my comments, and I'll try and be as. Speaking layman's terms here. Um, so I've I've read through the housing element. A few times now, and 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 every time I read through it, I get a better understanding and and and. And I understand that the goal of the housing element is to put the plan in place. Or to put the goals, the objective in place, right? And so I guess my comment is really on um. Was it like this, um, you know, like part six, the goals, the objectives, right? So and. Maybe um if if I recall that slide, how many goals do we have? Like six? Were there six?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, okay, okay. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but it would be one of my goals, right? So and and. Back to that, every time I read through this, I'm like, okay, this is great. Yep, this is great. All right. How how are we gonna do this? How are we going to accomplish this? How are we actually gonna build this? And uh and 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 I guess again, right, in layman's terms, right? I mean, I'd like one of the goals, one of our uh, one of our objectives to be along with that is. You know, to encourage landowners and builders to to actually construct and market the housing. That's in line with the objectives of Maraga's housing element. And again, I don't know if that belongs as one of the. Goals and objectives of the housing element, but every time I read this. And maybe it's just, you know, how I look at things, I'm always about like, all right, well, how how are we actually gonna do this? Like, this is great. This is, this is gonna check a lot of boxes, and I'm sure. The state's gonna come back and, you know, they're gonna be like, great job. We're gonna pat ourselves on the back, and then what? And um, that's, that's, it's it's a macro comment, and I, you know, and I get that, right? And that's why it's, you know, back to, you know, when when we hear the landowners and the builders and the developers speak, you know, why it's so interesting. And I think it's really vital that we understand that, because for us to understand where they're coming from is going to help us. Uh, do a better job of encouraging them to actually build. The housing that we so desperately need here in Maraga. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bodie. Any other commissioners have any comments that they'd like to make? Commissioner Helber, I think, yeah, yeah, there you go.
Um, first, I'd like to thank staff and the consultants for a. A thoughtful and very detailed package. I think the town is making great progress. Um, and it's, it's good to see all this uh process coordinated effect. And every time we meet, it's building on the next meeting, which is great. Um. I have some thoughts on a few things. Um, in terms of section. The the section that's talking about the uh encouraging housing and specifically affordable housing. There's a lot of. Suggestions that are encouraging development. But there's one suggestion that is imposing a uh a restriction. On throughout the town, as I read it, and that's the inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, I support affordable housing. I think Maraga needs to do our fair share of affordable housing. But I think we need to be very intentional and thoughtful about how we plan for affordable housing. And we don't want to encourage affordable housing. And inadvertently discourage development, thoughtful, wise development. In our town in its entirety.
development, thoughtful, wise development in our town in its entirety. Ten percent of nothing is still nothing. And in the town, even though we've had a few developments recently, traditionally, Moraga is a hard place to build subdivisions in. And if we stack a ten percent requirement across the entire town on those future jobs, let's say, and I know that the details of it aren't worked out yet and says certain small jobs would be exempt. But in this hypothetical example, let's say we had a ten unit development. One of those units would have to be a affordable unit. Affordable units are required to sell at whatever the calculation is for the area median income. And it's gonna be sold at a loss. The other nine units are gonna subsidize building and selling that last unit. And who's gonna pay for that? Well, the other nine future homeowners are gonna bear that cost. And I don't necessarily think that's appropriate across the entire town. Could it be appropriate in certain areas of the town? Perhaps, and I think it's worth looking into. Particularly if we're talking about upzoning the development potential. Well, perhaps we balance that upzoning, that windfall to whoever those property owners are. We balance it off with a little bit of affordable housing requirement. But applying that across the entire town, I, I have, I, I'd like to hear more about it. I'd like to see more about it, but I have concerns that we would inadvertently be really discouraging development in our town. And we need all types of development, not just affordable, but all types of development. I do like the fee deferral program. I don't know about a fee waiver. Town still needs to function and these fees are important. But deferring a fee to the close of escrow or the certificate of occupancy pushes that cost closer to the settlement of the house versus upfront when they start a house or when they record the final map. And then they have to carry interest on that. So anytime you can do a fee deferral, that helps. And then some of the other encouraging actions we're taking, I do support. And then going to the scenic corridors. I would like to hear more about that or like to see the details of that more. Specifically, you know, I, I, I know it's talked about and there's a schedule when those details would come out. But I think the scenic corridors in the town are really important, particularly when you come in on Moraga Road or Moraga Way. And I think that definitely are, they are very important to the character of the town. I'm not saying that they can't be updated or revised. I'm just saying I would be very interested in the details of that. I think the devil is always in the details. But I, again, really want to compliment the town staff and the consultants for preparing a very detailed package. And I like the direction that we're headed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hober. Any other commissioners have any comments they'd like to make? Seeing no, no one anxiously jumping out of their chair, I'm gonna proceed and just concur with a lot of the statements that Commissioner Hober made when we had our joint session with the town council. There was a discussion where it seemed, I believe it was, all of the council was interested in a discussion over whether or not the inclusionary zoning would be applied townwide or just to the shopping centers. So, one, and I think that the language in Program fourteen under the objective could be changed to allow the flexibility for that discussion to continue. Instead of reading ten percent of all units in future development, it could be read or changed to ten percent of specified units. Just noting that this isn't a done deal and that discussion will continue. That would be my, my suggestion in change to the language here, just to ensure the, that the town still has a robust discussion over inclusionary zoning. Which I, I support, though I'm, I, I do have some reservations about it being applied townwide. Similarly, having lived across the street, or not similarly, but on a separate issue, having lived across the street from REEM Center, it, you know, I couldn't help but notice while I was there that while the, the parking spaces up front are always busy, the ones that are closer to the road are almost always vacant. So there is a tremendous amount of opportunity there. I'm happy to see that we've taken a, a deep look at what REEM Center can look like, as, as stated in previous meetings. This is our opportunity to really decide what these two gateway shopping residential centers will look like for the next hundred years. And I, it's an opportunity that I'm, I'm glad that we are diving into. I do, as I mentioned, as I kind of was alluding to in my questioning earlier, I, having lived again with the, with the, the storage facilities behind me and then also to the side of us, on the other side of a, of a sound wall with the underutilized space for, for the veterinary clinic. If we're talking about doing a public realm plan of, it, it would be, even if we're not talking potentially about considering that for housing, you know, right next door to the veterinary clinic, there is a similarly California mission style business complex that, that's there that the, there's sort of a consistency with the architecture at the, the public storage to via Moraga hopscotch over the, the veterinary clinic and continues on with the next structure there. So it would just be great if, as we're proceeding with the public realm plan, if all of the, the potential opportunities for both retaining business and also for, for housing were considered into a similar level of detail that we had with the design guidelines for, for the Moraga Center. And, and at, at that point, I do want, so I know that we had Mr. Brisoni asking some questions about whether or not some of the points in his letter would be addressed. My understanding from staff, and this is a question, is that once this moves forward, this will have to go through a sequel process. And in sequel, we would have public comment and there would be responses made to substantive public comment at that time that's not been addressed in this discussion. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yeah, tonight is just a, a study session only. And then we, we are taking the public comments as we're going through this. And you are correct, we will be addressing a lot of issues during the environmental review process.
Perfect. Thank you. Those are my, my comments and questions. And I see Commissioner Bodie with his hand raised.
Yeah, I, I, I've, I've got a follow on. And I think Commissioner Hober for bringing this up because in the back of my mind from the last, the last time that we all got together with town council and we were talking about the inclusionary housing element. And I kept on thinking in the back of my mind about the story that somebody told us, I think it was Corte Madera, where they set their housing element goal too high and absolutely nothing got done and no builder built anything and it was just, you know, and, and I don't want that to happen here in Moraga so. And you really got me thinking. So if we can change the, if we could also include the language to apply to specific developments and perhaps, right, also maybe put, you know, maybe have a range with ten percent's our goal, but that we can also go in with a range. So not only are we applying our inclusionary housing element to specific developments, but that there's also some realistic range in there with our goal clearly being ten percent. That's, that was the only point I wanted to make on that since I, I've, I've been thinking about that, you know, a lot as well and just every time I think about it, it's like, what can we do so what happened to Corte Madera does not happen here because I really feel like we've got, you know, one shot at this and guys, I mean, you know, I don't know about yourself, but eight years from now, I'll, I'll probably still be here. Maybe hopefully not on Zoom, but if I'm wanted, you know, I'll probably still be on, you know, on the planning commission, right? You know, I want to see this, I want to see us do this. I, I really do.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for your comments to the chair, to both Commissioner Hober, Commissioner Bodie, and Chair Hillis. These are all really good comments. And I think what we're trying to do is right now, we don't have any inclusionary housing program. So we're not getting any affordable done. We haven't done any, zero in the last like eight years. So the state density bonus is there and the state density bonus is very flexible now and it allows for even more. And it's made it much more easier. But I think the inclusionary housing, it's a balance because it would help to serve a gap. And I don't think it was Corte Madera. It was another, it was another. San Rafael. Theirs was at twenty percent and we think that that was too high. So they did do a study and they determined that that was too high. And twenty percent can also be a constraint. So it's really like a balance, trying to figure out what's appropriate. And so we did bring in options for ten percent and fifteen percent. And, you know, in, in all fairness, you know, in some of our discussions that we're having, a lot of what developers are looking for are certainty of review. They're looking for certain concessions like flexibility on setbacks. And so they're willing to do the, the additional affordable unit because they want concessions like, you know, reduced setbacks or, you know, something, a little bit more flexibility that way. And so that's why the inclusionary housing was more favorable versus a density, a density bonus. So anyways, we, we're still looking into this and we're still looking into what's working. And we're certainly talking to a lot of communities. And we will come back with a more comprehensive set of detailed options later in August so that we can have that discussion. I think right now what we're just asking for is a policy direction to include inclusionary housing as a program.
I think I saw that Barry had his hand raised for additional.
Thanks, Chair Hillis. I was just gonna add, just to affirm what Afshah said, we don't have to decide this tonight. This is essentially part of our work plan for the next eight years. It's a priority item and something that we've said we're gonna resolve within six months after we adopt the housing element. But we don't really have to work out the details at this point and I think we're really just submitting this. We'll see what the state says. I mean, the state may say, oh, you can't say you're gonna do inclusionary unless you do it for the whole town. We don't know that yet. We're waiting to see what they say. At this point, I think the, the more open we can be, the, the better. It just keeps our options open because it's really not something we need to commit to at this point.
And to the point of keeping the options open, I, I do believe that the, the suggestion that I made earlier is more open to all options than, than hinting towards one in, in particular. And I, I don't know, are we actually taking an, an action here or are we just providing comment?
I, I think tonight you're just providing comment and then the action comes next Monday, or sorry, Tuesday.
My, my preference strongly is for the objective to be changed to ten percent of specified units. I think it's encompassing of both, of all, of all potential opportunities for how you can do it. I don't, I, I hear Commissioner Bodie's concern and I think it's a valid one. I think that from what we saw in the, the comparison of the percentages previously, I think I, I was comfortable that ten percent wasn't, wasn't a barrier. But again, I'm, I'm looking forward to the further analysis, but for the purposes of moving the ball on, it would make me a lot more comfortable with this document if it was more reflective of the, the general sense that I think that the commission and the council gave at our last joint, joint session.
So I do, at the last joint session, the direction was to come back with a more detailed discussion in August and that's what we're really going for. I think there was a general discussion that, general direction that they were in favor of inclusionary housing. But there still needs to be a decision on town, townwide versus, you know, focused areas. And like I said, we're looking into that and we are looking at what's, what's appropriate, what other communities are doing, what's gonna work for town of Moraga because one thing is that we have to look at our local context. And we look, have to look at our, our data. And based on the data, based on our local context, we have to align those policies. So we will be coming back for more detailed discussion on this. And ultimately, you know, the, the policy direction is really with council.
Got it. So if the, if there was a majority of the commission that, that was supportive of changing, not just making that one little fine tuning change there, is that something that we would have the authority to do? Or again, this is just receiving our comment and we'll have more substantive discussion next week.
You can make, you can make that recommendation, but remember, we are coming back for more robust discussion about this whole matter and maybe we should, you know, wait until we have all the details. I mean, I understand all the concerns that are being raised. But I think what we are, and staff is, staff is doing the research, staff and consultants. So I think maybe we should. It's my suggestion, it's my recommendation, that once we have all the full details worked out, that at that point, you, you make a decision on, you know, the wording and the language.
I, I hear you and I, I'm definitely, if, if there's not a, a majority of who we have here that concurs with me, I, I definitely can stand down on this, but let, I, my preference would just be to hear from my commissioners. And I can start, let's go through alphabetical order. Commissioner Bodie, what are your thoughts on, on our suggesting the change as I discussed with the objective to change it from ten percent of all units to ten percent of specified units?
I like it. I'm in favor of that, Gary.
Sounds good. Commissioner Hober, what are your thoughts on that suggestion?
I, I'm torn. I, I, I support it, but at the same time, I completely hear staff and, you know, we're just, we're having a workshop tonight and they're gonna go back and do their due diligence and come with something a little bit more fully baked. Do we give them? I, I think they've clearly heard our, at least the, the viewpoint of three people. And I'm sure they'll take that into consideration, but I do support. I think when it comes to inclusionary housing, less is more in terms of the focus of how we apply it because we've never had one in this town and we have to make sure we get it right.
Sure. And one thing that I will add that we are looking at from a staff perspective in terms of what we're bringing back with the inclusionary ordinance is how HCD is responding to ordinances that are not townwide because of, you know, other policies within the housing element to affirmatively further fair housing throughout the town as well as to create affordable opportunities throughout the town. So, so that is something that we're looking at as well in terms of just moving, moving this forward with the, obviously the ultimate goal to get approval by HCD and get it adopted.
Thank you, Assistant Town Attorney. Commissioner Polsky, what are your thoughts on the suggestion?
I made the comment during the joint meeting with town council that I like the concept of inclusionary housing. But I do not want it to get in the way of development in the town and. But with that said, I'm in support of staff's recommendation that we table this. Until, you know, further opportunity to let them study it and let us understand it a little bit better. My, from memory of that meeting, it seemed like it was one of the levers that we could pull to encourage. Development in the town. And so I'd like to learn more before we start suggesting changes to the language.
Thank you. Commissioner Teal? Oh, we can't hear you. No, looks like we lost your audio double sign in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
My apologies. I'd be in support of exploring the specified language. I think comments from from town attorney would be helpful as well, too.
Thank you, sir. So it does sound like we have a a soft, squishy majority on the on that suggestion. The. I had a follow on question along those lines. And it slipped my mind, so if it comes back again by next week, I will, I'll ask it then. So I think staff has heard us loud and clear on our suggestion. And with that, I think we don't have any emotion or action to take here. It's just that we. Accept the report and we move on to the next portions of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we close the public hearing and move on to routine and other matters. Are there. Any routine or other matters, Director Hamid, to report?
Yes, we have a meeting next Tuesday at six thirty. Our regularly scheduled meeting. And then we will take your recommendations at that point and give them to town council. Town council is holding two meetings. July eleventh and July thirteenth. And then we will submit at the end of July, the working draft to HCD.
Thank you. And I actually, while we were, while you were giving your report, I did remember the one point, and this was a question for the town attorney who I think. Has chimed off, but if it goes through with that length, there you go. If it goes through with the with the language, it says all and we. Do change it in August, does that put us in any jeopardy from the state? To say that we had been considering something more expansive and we made it less?
So if we do, if if we do say all and HCD reviews our housing element and approves the housing element. That would be the assumption that it would apply townwide absent further discussions with HCD.
So after, just a good question on how this follows through, and I'm sorry, we closed the public hearing, but. The if this goes through without that amendment tonight. The next step is we have our meeting, the council has their meeting, and then it's submitted? So presumably there would be the time for for wiggle room to be added would be at one of the three meetings prior to to submission?
That the the, with respect to the language that is in the policy, yes. With respect to the actual drafting of the ordinance, which has a lot of different policy implications as well to that in terms of. You know, alternatives and implementation, et cetera. You know, that would come at a later time. But the actual policy itself on July fifth. You will be seeing the housing element to make a recommendation and that will include that language at that time. So so we can. So at this point, it's overall direction, but the actual, your recommendation will be on July fifth.
Sounds great. So keeping our options open through that is is a possibility if that's the direction we choose to go. And sorry, thank you for indulging me on that. I just had a.
Of course.
Tiny lapse. And now moving on to item eight in the agenda, reports. Do any of the planning commissioners have anything to report? I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads in the negative. I don't have anything to report either. Staff, are there any other reports that you need to make?
Nope, just that we're working hard and your packets for the fifth of July. Two of you have requested. Printed versions, so they were dropped off tonight. The remaining of you have requested links, so those links will be going out to you as well. And then. Chapter six. Will. Chapter six will basically be coming out later Thursday, so we'll drop that off later.
Thank you for that. And I don't know if I ever made my feelings known on this, but was I one of those that requested the the hard copy?
You requested, I I mean, I made a list of everybody who told me and basically very specifically just. Vice Chair Luster and Commissioner Davis were the only two that said they wanted printed copies. Polsky said link, and I have my like little notes here on everybody that asked for. Let's see, I have Polsky that said he wanted a link, Bodie said he wanted a link. Luster wanted a printed version, Davis wanted a printed version, and so that's what we did today.
Okay, I I I was remiss then. I must have missed that email. I apologize if I, if it's possible for me to get. A printed version so I can read it as I commute into the office on part, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, I will try. I will try. I will try my best, but we're already in production mode, but let's see what we can do.
Sounds great. Thank you. Now, moving on to adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And second. I see Commissioner Polsky. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock. Enjoy the rest of your evening and thank you so much for staff, for all of your hard work and keeping us all together for this. Looking forward to the meeting next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excited.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth.